Welcome, everybody. OCSA General Counsel Victor Schickel is on Friday, quarter four of 2025. Before I got y'all here, I talked to Raleigh the last couple several days. He's gonna be here by soon today. He asked me if he could be here in person on the sixteenth of this month.
Why?
Is that okay for you?
Why? What does he want to do?
Let him finish. He wants to be here when the data center is gonna be here, at the data center. He wants to be here with that guy who's gonna be here. That's why, that was his reason. I said, "I'm not gonna do anything unless I go with the council." So what do y'all think? Does he want to be here or not? In person?
The data center?
The data center guy's gonna be here if he wants to be here.
Yes?
Anybody else good with that, or you don't like it?
I don't have any, I don't have any trouble with one way or the other, but I'm not.
You didn't find fault?
I'm okay with, I would like to comment about the, about the data center. I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, we're talking about the Kansas land. I think that's what it was when they were on Zoom last time. I just want to remind everybody that we have.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm for it then.
Go ahead.
Lost my train of thought. Oh, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have spent probably tens of thousands of dollars in research and legal fees to get that property up there, that nine hundred seventy-two, seventy-four acres of surface approved to be a conservation mitigation program to offset endangered species. So that is something really significant that we'll need to keep in mind. And maybe we could all study upon that in advance of that meeting. And I've got some documentation. This was created under the OCSA General Counsel Board, and it received a U.S. Fish and Wildlife approval. And we took that and sent it over to the Bureau of Indian Affairs for them to acknowledge that we have this sub-sign to offset endangered species credits, like in, in, what initiated that was the American Marry and Mew. And that's since been downlisted from endangered to protected. So, but anyway, there's other potential endangered species. I just would like for all of us to get up to speed on that, prepare ourselves for that meeting. All right? Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, all right. It's our custom and our way of life. We often travel a little bit. Next, bye. I have to pray and try to talk to our people about these losses in which we're encompassing. As you well know, it's been weeks and weeks of it. I ask you, Lord, to answer that phone. I want you, Lord, to let, overlook us on our shortcomings. We ask you that, Lord, to be with our people. Wakanda Ali, Wakanda Zinki, Dot C, Uwe Kijnaji. I want these zani nikongia, ah, monje on, shunka wonon ali jinkashina. Lord, I ask you to take care of my elders. I ask you to take care of our children. Our people used to look at both of those sides, and that's what they all drove for in that prayer, that never-ending bloodline. Lord, I ask you to take care, kishtomi ha, zani nikongia. These are Osages here, all of us involved, every family I want you to watch over. In a room the other day, we were taking care of some business, Lord, and you made it for us. And that's why I want to ask that you take care of our nation. Whatever you think it is, all I know is it better be under our Lord Jesus Christ, or we're failures into our, taking our people into that future. Akeem Bana, okay, what's coming, Lord, that time? I just ask that you take care of us. I ask you for blessings upon all these ones in mourning. We just go day after day after day, and we've got to realize is that we've got to take care of that. It's got to be in our hearts. It has to be in where we go out and reach out and help each other. Lord of all of our districts, we're coming that time of year that we're gonna take care of some business, but we have so many things that need to be done to keep the order of our world. Because you can be anyone you want to be, but if you're gonna be Osage, you're gonna follow our Lord Creator and what He's given us as a gift. And you're gonna treat it as such, or you need to lay it down and step away. Lord, I ask you to take care of our soldiers in the field. We look at our places, and our people have always been under attack. I gave a talk, Lord, and I broke in it because it moved me emotionally. I ask that you strengthen us. You guide us. You watch over us all. This rain is coming down. They say it cleanses those tracks away so that families can regain themselves. That's my prayer today, Lord, is let us regain ourselves. Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen. Thank you for talking.
Councilman Big Horse?
Here.
Second Chair Tishwala?
Present.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Here.
Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Chairman Reddickel?
Here.
Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Councilman Chappellford?
Here.
Councilman Waller?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Councilman. New business, right on, new business, item four. Charlie Duvall, Enbridge, you're up, Charlie. Good to see you.
Good to see you all again. Good morning.
Good morning.
Charlie Duvall, Enbridge, hour. Good to see you again. Just a reminder, here in Osage Nation, we have two crude oil pipelines that traverse accounting miles of twenty-four inch, the other's thirty-six, moving crude oil, a little under a million barrels a day. What brings me here today is that we've got two routine maintenance projects where we cross the Penn Creek and the Bird Creek here within the nation. Both of those are beginning to erode, and we're looking to re-contour the creek banks, install some heavy rock to stop erosion. And in doing so, we've got to remove, I believe it's about eight hundred and sixty cubic yards from Bird Creek and four hundred and thirty cubic yards from Penn Creek. So that'll be material soiled, rock, a combination of things. We do not intend to use or sell any of that material effect. We plan to just move it from one place to another, preferably deposit it on the landowner's land wherever we're doing work. If that's not possible, we'll be finding another location within Osage Nation to deposit that material. So with that, I'm here to seek a waiver from the two fourteen non-oil and gas mineral lease to do this work. I had visited with Camille over at OCSA Agency, and she indicated that I should bring this before it's announced. Yes, ma'am?
I didn't quite understand. You're asking for a waiver from the two fourteen, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am. In short, we're looking for your approval to do this work. And about a two fourteen easement, since we're not going to be selling or having any financial gain from this material, we're just simply relocating it to another location to protect the pipeline there at the creek crossing.
Okay. You don't want us to sign anything?
Well, I'm looking for your guidance.
Okay, hold on, hold on. If you look at your booklets, you back around, look at them. That's what it looks like right now. And by the time he gets through done with all the gravel moving and everything, this is a picture at the back of what it'll look like after he's through. But if your buddy's got a booklet, just look at it. Got any questions? Come on, let's walk.
Sir, do we need a resolution to allow you to sign that waiver? I'm all in support of allowing that. I know the ripraps can be well needed in this area. You haven't had this replacement repaired before, have you?
No, we're coming in. It's starting to erode. It didn't need it before. It's ended flights in time. We're just preventative maintenance.
I'm in support to call up the chair.
Agreed, Lord.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to know, who is the surface owner on these two locations?
Well, on Penn Creek, it is.
Give her her name, please.
I'm sorry, Mike Robinson. I am a land advisor with Enbridge Energy. On the, on the Penn Creek, it is a BIA.
Restricted Osage.
Yeah, restricted Osage, yes, sir. And I was trying to think of, it's a maker, made the Maker Trust.
I know who it is.
And then on, we will be crossing some of the Beaufort Ranch to get to that, that property. On the Bird Creek, the owner is Harvey Payne.
Who?
Harvey Payne.
Harvey Payne?
Yes, sir.
Is this all, this will be within your right of way? Is that right?
There's a very small portion on Penn Creek, which our land scheme has engaged the Osage Nation Real Estate Office to get a revocable use agreement for that, and that's currently in process. It's less, it's about a hundredth of an acre, and we're all going to be coming off of the easement. And real quick to confirm that I'm accurate in that. Matt Thomas is our construction coordinator for this project. Is that accurate? We've got just a small amount coming off of our existing easement?
Ladies and gentlemen, Matt Thomas, Construction Manager with Enbridge Energy. That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so, Chairman, they don't have a site located to deposit this material in. And he told us that he would, you know, I guess could leave it on the, on the surface owner's land if they had permission, I guess. But I was just curious whether or not the, our mineral state, if there is a need for additional film material that they could take it to, and who they would talk to about that. Have you talked to the nation about that well?
Hold on, hold on.
So that's, that is my concern, is maybe, maybe we would have a use for that somewhere else that might benefit the mineral state.
What Charlie told me this morning is he has, they're gonna put it right back on Bird Creek. And I'll bet on the Penn Creek, the landowner doesn't want them to put it back there. Is that correct?
At this time, yes.
Okay. That would be, that would be the dirt he's talking about right there. Maybe we can put it somewhere else. Councilman Redcorn?
Thank you, Chair. I believe everything's already in place for you to sign this, and we can get moving.
What's in place?
What's in place?
I'd like to make a call. Can I finish, please, being interrupted? We signed a resolution for a chairman to make that determination under certain amounts. And I don't want to repeat it out here. We're supposed to keep all that confidential. But that's in place, so if you feel so led, Chairman, I believe you can, you have the right to make that signature.
Are you through?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Rebar.
Okay.
Councilman Rebar.
Well, he just told me to go ahead.
Councilman Rebar.
I'll be able to catch one of those.
Go ahead.
I'm curious. You said you got an Osage Nation right of way? What kind of right of way did you get from them?
So we've got a twenty-year easement that we negotiated with OCSA Agency and the BIA, as well as the surface owners.
That's correct.
Yep. And it's on a twenty-year term. The last one was renegotiated in 2021. Is that correct? Twenty twenty-two?
Two.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay. I'm curious whether they would, I mean, I don't know. Is it for the subsurface or the surface? I mean, I'm curious what they did here. I don't even think to say about the subsurface.
Just a right-of-way easement. So it's not use of the subsurface in any way. Essentially, we're trenching and then just placing a pipe and covering back over.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yep.
Anybody else? So we're good with the waiver, there, right? Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it very much.
Hey, thank you very much for the time, and great to see all of you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Back to new business on item B. We need a resolution to approve the passage of real bird and the rest of these. LLP contract. It's on page twenty-five. Page twenty-five.
Absolutely. There's several tracks.
Chairman, I'm supportive. It is a exciting contract. We have it placed now.
We renew another contract because of President Raleigh's. We are in pursuit of pre-bond. So this is for the real bird.
The landowners have got changed now.
A new contract.
So I'll call you.
I would make the motion, sir. Second.
Second, with Councilman Redcorn. Any discussion on the contract? Eric Dunn, off the vote.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishwala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. Next on the agenda is Bill Lynn, update. Bill already here. You got the floor. I'd like to see you on your new business.
May I say something here? Bill told me about this, and I asked him to come up here and tell the rest of you. I tried to call one of you, and they didn't want to hear what I had to say. But you need to listen to this man. He got a phone call. Anyway, go ahead, Bill.
Okay. I put together a list since it was called an update on things I'm working on. But this happens to be a DOI opportunity that somebody called me during lunch and told me they were putting a team together, and they get back with me and let me know what it is.
Tell them who it was?
Ken Bellmard, Department of Interior.
Do you know who he is?
Yeah.
He's the Special Pointe for the Under-Secretary of Interior for Policy and Economic Development. He's actually connected to that Elon Musk bill.
Don't point at me.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, but he called.
I know everybody, but I'm not.
But he called Bill. It's my point.
Actually, I would like, Chairman, just point of order, give, instead of that, give out the title of this position and department. Are you talking office of whatever that OEI is?
You know, I'm not sure what Ken's point of fancy.
That's all I need to know.
Pointed at the last, under the Trump administration, in his first gig as president, and now he's appointed again. And he got my phone number. He called me and said, "There's an opportunity that they want to present to us." That's all he told me.
Who's that?
Wait to hear. Ken Bellmard. I know him because he's a tall Indian, and he's an attorney. He wrestled at OSU. He comes to our Vegas Hall Conference, and he just happens to have a pretty sweet position with the executive branch.
Councilman, Councilman Redcorn?
Thank you, Chair. I did hear about this DOI opportunity. If I'm trying to remember, it was a AI with the oil and gas opportunity that I think could be beneficial to the shareholders. So I think it's a grant opportunity if we so choose as a council to go that route. And I'm understanding it possibly as a grant. So I went to one training on AI for oil and gas, and I was really impressed. And I was gonna try to learn up some stuff about AI before I could come to the council and say, "I think we ought to do this," or look into it. And we'd have to pay for it, you know? I was thinking in my brain, we ought to pay for it somehow, but then all of a sudden, lo and behold, I get a call from somebody telling me about this opportunity, what, Bill? And I just heard. And then I heard from Bill, somebody called him. So I said, "Okay, let's hear it. Let's put something together. Let the council hear." So if there's a grant out there for AI for oil and gas development, I think we ought to go for it. We won't have to pay for it, just like we did with some of these other opportunities. We just wrote a grant and got to work on that. So I think it's a good opportunity myself. AI is really exploding. And the other thing I think it's gonna do to the council's enjoyment, I think, plus our attorney, it gives us ammunition to go after the Bureau to get our information. Because you can't do AI without information. And all that information is stuck in those files over there in the BIA, and we've been battling that. So I think it just gives us another avenue, you know? I'd like to see if AI could, we put all that information in and look at the decisions that were made. Say back in the thirties, forties, and then asked a question, was it the right decision? And I did ask that question to the experts in AI, and they said, "Yes." The thing is, if you have a confidential system, you got to pay for it. So if we go down that track, we probably want to hang on to ours as our own and keep it. And when you do that, you have to pay. Else, if you do the regular track, they use all the information you give for a learning to improve AI as a whole. So there's two concepts here. Number one, we have our own, and it stays in our boundaries. Number two, we say, "Let everybody have it," you know? So that's a council decision, but I thought it was kind of wise if we could step back and say, "Okay, when we head here, we need to get our ducks in." But that was my plan before I heard this grant, and they slammed right in front of my face. So I think it's a good opportunity. Thank you, Chair.
How it all started, really, was the chief called me saying, he said, "Bill Martin's got a grant or something to do with AI." I don't even talk about it. And I said, "Grant?" The only grant I know about is the Great Resiliency Grant. I said, "Is that what you're talking about?" He said, "No." He said, "Bellmard asking us to look at another grant." So I said, "Well, Bill Lynn and Charlie would know more about this than I would." So I gave him Bill's number and I gave him Charlie's number. And the chief called you, didn't he?
Mm-hmm.
And then the chief called Bill, and that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, Chairman, thank you. Okay, so we still haven't, no one explained what this grant is yet or opportunity. So you throw down the name of an individual that, I guess, doing some project under the Department of Interior or an appointment of some sort. I suggest that, that those speaking with this individual, Councilman Redcorn and our geologist, Bill Lynn, tell this individual to contact the Mineral Council and communicate with us, the Mineral Council, through our chairman. And we can make them learn what, find out what they're talking about. Because some of us don't know anything about these phone calls to the chairman, the phone calls to Councilman Redcorn or to our geologists. We're just now learning it for the first time, and I just assume any communication go through the chairman, and maybe we can learn a little bit about what they're talking about. Right now, I don't have a clue what you all are even talking about. Some individual that we don't know of has mentioned that there might be a grant having to do with AI that might benefit our mineral state, which I'd be all in favor of pursuing it. But I just don't have, we just don't have any information. And maybe if we could get a channel through you to share with all of us, maybe we can learn something. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
When I was at the United Indians of Oklahoma, I believe it was called, and.
Yes, sir.
Cherokee, five civilized tribes. We could go, two weeks ago Thursday, I went down. And a guy named Scott Davis was on Zoom. He's, he's under the DOI.
Bergen.
He's under Bergen. And Ken Bellmard was sitting in the background, him and another girl in the background. And the Bergen were supposed to be at Hard Rock that day, and they invited him, but he didn't show up. He didn't make it. But he said, Scott Davis, he was on screen. So Scott Davis did, they asked him a bunch of questions and everything. But I pointed, Bellmard was in the background, and he came up to screen and said hello. So he's, he's under Bergen. So evidently, he got a lot of good eye, good eye. Anybody else? Stephanie?
I just would like for whoever talks to whatever form of communication, whether it's you or these two gentlemen over here, that you keep the rest of the minerals council apprised of what's going on, and let us know as it comes down. Because we want to know about it.
Councilman Rebar?
Thank you. For one thing, I'd like for somebody to spell this individual's name because I can't hear exactly what the last name is. So I'd like for somebody to say that. And to Councilwoman Irwin's point, I disagree with that. I would like for somebody to tell this individual to contact you, and you share it with all of us. Thank you.
That's Redcorn.
What I'm hearing is, that's what happened. He contacted the chairman. Chairman told him to send it to Redcorn and Bill Lynn. So he's already contacted the chair, so I think this conversation needs to go back to the chair. If you guys are not happy with that, maybe we may need a system where anybody talks to the chairman, he contacts all of us. And I just responded to his request. So to me, what you guys are asking for happened. So I did what I'm supposed to do. I think it might be to who the chair to reconsider, just call everybody, tell them what's going on. I don't see an issue here. I mean, we need, there's a heads up for a grant that could come our way. I think we ought to jump on it.
Well, it was an indirect type of situation anyway, you know?
Thank you, Chairman. Okay. That's not exactly what happened, because you, you didn't share it with all of us. I ask, and I'm asking now, for you to please spell the guy's last name. And would you please share this information with the full council so that we can get up to speed on what our opportunity is? And that's all I'm asking for, is spell in the person's name, please, so we can write it down on a piece of paper. And if we, and just share the information with the rest of the council. That's all.
Anybody else have anything? We're on the item D and new business.
I guess it's gonna be a secret.
I did what he asked me to do.
B E L L M A R D. Just a minute. B E L L what? M A R D. Thank you.
Let's go on to new business, and item D proposed constitutional amendment. Congresswoman Reba, wait, go ahead. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the council. I'm coming today about, we're in session right now. A conference session is coming on. And I have a resolution drafted up. I haven't filed this bill yet. I'm coming as a courtesy. I'm not asking for anything other than maybe some discussion and some feedback today about what's been sent to you. I've also sent another document to Ms. Reynolds this morning. I don't know if we're able to get that in their books. But it's the breakdown where we can see clearly what I've done. When you look at these resolutions, I know it looks like we've done a lot of stuff to them. But truly, I've just dropped two sentences in Article fifteen that concerns the minerals council's structure. Part of that article says that it's a structure of eight members. And part of it also says that you have to be members of the Osage Nation in order to be a minerals council member. Not my language, it was a language that was passed in two thousand and six. And I, I, I saw that look, and I kind of maybe agreed partially with that look that you gave, Councilman. But that's the way it is. That's the language that was adopted. I've had many conversations, because I've been pretty close to the mineral state for quite a few years, with members of this council, with shareholders, that believed it would be beneficial for language to be, or the practice to be adopted, that members of this council cannot be employees of the Osage Nation at the same time they sit their seats here on this council. And so with this constitutional amendment, it adds two sentences into Article fifteen. And it's the same exact language that's in the legislative portion of our constitution that disallows Congress to sit their seat and work for the Osage Nation or any other tribal nation. That language is already in Article six, where it pertains to the Congress. It says in Article six, for Congress, it says, "No member of the Osage Nation Congress shall hold any other tribal office or position of profit under the Osage Nation during the term." under the Osage Nation during the term for which the member is elected or appointed. And it's, and it continues on, it says, no member of the Osage Nation Congress shall hold any other tribal office under any other tribal government during his or her term. That's, that's language that's right now in the Constitution, in Article six, that pertains to Congress. What I've done for this amendment is I've lifted that exact words, only I've changed Osage Congress to Osage Minerals Council. And in your article here, there's the existing language in yellow, and there's the, the tail end language in purple. What I've done is I've taken those two sentences, and I've dropped them in, only using Osage Minerals Council instead of Osage Congress. So I haven't made up any different language, I've just shifted that that practice applies to this body as well.
I, I have a question. All of a sudden, after the Constitution's done, we were always told that what we did here had nothing to do with the nation, and the nation didn't have anything to do with us. If, I'm, I can't figure out why now you're trying to enforce something, you're gonna have to change something to enforce something, right?
It's a constitutional amendment, yes.
So in the Constitution, it says that we're separate.
Says you're an independent agency.
Independent agency. So I'm kinda confused on what you're asking us, are you asking us to, to, uh? I don't know, I, personally, I think it's overreach. I think it's overreach. I think that, uh, we need to be just a little bit more, uh, separated from the nation, and what we do and how we run our business needs to be how we run our business. And I appreciate everything the Congress has done for us, I appreciate you. But, uh, we have a lot of overreach, and not just you, we have other people trying to be influential and have us do things that I don't think are quite right. So I, I've even had somebody make a comment to me. They thought that when we have like executive sessions or whatever, that we should have executive sessions. Anybody else included in our executive sessions, that's being disrespectful to the shareholders. And I don't know, I, I don't, I, I appreciate you, I really do. You, you've been really great to us, helped us with legislative stuff, but I'm just telling you what my constituents are telling me. And I don't know if it really has any, I mean, I like the Congress, Congress is good to us, but, you know, I really don't... I mean, I'm just telling you what my constituents are saying.
And that's why, and that's why I'm here, I'm here to, to have this conversation and, and to hear from you. I would like to, though, let you know that way back when I was a brand new Congress member, when I read the Constitution in Article fifteen, you know, it actually said at that time, it said that this minerals estate was reserved for the people of the Osage Nation. That's what our Constitution said. And in this one person's mind, that wasn't even a shareholder at the time, that language was wrong in our Constitution. And as a legislator, that's what we do, we try to adapt, we try to make our laws and our governing document useful. Up to that point, our Constitution had never been amended. And I, I came and I talked to this body, some of you were on it, some of you weren't, about making that constitutional amendment, and you guys agreed with me on that one. And if you disagree with me on that one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna really take this into consideration. But that was the first time that our Constitution had ever been amended and it pertained to this minerals estate. And I just wanna let you know, I would never do anything to harm this estate.
That's you.
Right, I know, but I, I understand.
There's all these other people involved.
Right, I understand. So I'm just gonna say that, that that has happened before, this Article fifteen has been amended before, because the language in it was not right, practice of that, what it said was not right, and the people agreed with it, and they changed that. But back to what we're talking about presently, I just wanted to, to give you some history on that. Ms., Mr. Redcorn was wanting to be...
Go ahead, Councilwoman Redcorn.
Chair, um, by, uh, the Constitution came about after the two thousand and four. People went to DC, said they couldn't get scholarships, they couldn't, whatever. And so in two thousand and four, Congressman, US Congressman, sponsored, and they created, and they, and this Constitution came out in two thousand and six. Well, what's written was in that Constitution. The only thing that the nation can do, they've got five days to bring up a disagreement with the lease that we approved. If that doesn't happen, the lease moves on. That's the only thing written in that Constitution. She says that it says reserve, so I did ask the question, what does reserve mean? Does that mean you guys are saying now you own the mineral estate? And I didn't get a square answer from anybody. So that reserve, what does that mean? Well, it could be, you know, so I think a lot of this interpretation that the nation is in full control is not in anything written in the Constitution or anywhere, it's assumed. Everybody wants this mineral state. They've been doing it, they've made movie about it, and it's written, just all of us written, about how they want to take from the Osages. Well, this is an Osage Headright Holder Trust. It belongs to the Osage Headright Holders. And that, that's all. You look at the quarterly report, I get a quarterly report from Anadarko, from my land in Anadarko. You're always telling me, you're down from there, get out of here. And you're laughing, so, but the two reports look the same. My Anadarko report from BIA's got thirteen people on there. I pulled the quarterly report from the Osage here, it says Osage Tribe of Indians of Oklahoma. Doesn't say anybody else. So I keep wondering, I asked Lacy, bring that thing in, and she did one minute, she had that stacked quarterly report right here. Take a look at the top of it, that's the owner, according to the Bureau of Indians Affairs, and it says Osage Tribe, it's still unchanged. So I'm asking the question, and I'm going, why are these people all saying this mineral state belongs to them? It doesn't, it's never been conveyed. The BIA has not, and then we, you know, I asked, did the BIA approve that Constitution?
No.
They didn't, they didn't ever, you know, so I'm going, how did this property get conveyed to the nation? It had, in my view, I'm gonna say as a, as a representative of the shareholders, this is your trust. This belongs to you, not anybody else, like the state of Oklahoma, my state, and all them, and the nation, and the county, and the United States. I've even heard the United States say, this trust belongs to us, you guys are beneficiary. I said, bull, we paid for it. We paid for this with cash, and it's ours. So that's what I wanted to go to tell Bergen, we're not like any other Osage native people in this country, we paid for our stuff. And we moved down here because we wanted to. Your grandfather's brought us, said, check it out, brought us right here, this belongs to us. It's a powerful story, and we need to protect, belongs to us as an Osage Headright. Way we know, Chairman.
For the benefit of the younger people that are here, and some of you are younger, and, 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 uh, but it all started, just like Councilman Redcorn said, it started in eighteen, right after Civil War, everything started after seven. Grant, Lincoln got shot, and Grant took over, he was elected twice. He was in re-creation, it's like, you know? Well, we were included in that, and we had to go somewhere from Kansas, because they'd already moved us from Ohio to Missouri to Kansas. So they moved, and we decided to make a deal with the Turkeys, and we bought this land. And it was, that, that's what you're talking about right there, we bought this land from eighteen seventy-one until nineteen oh six. We can do anything we want to, anything.
Still can.
We can drill for uranium, it doesn't matter, we could have done anything. But in nineteen oh, in nineteen oh four, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh six, every tribe in this whole Indian Territory was allotted. We wanted the cause of the Osage, the last one to be allotted, it's nineteen oh six, the lot was there. And when that happened, I, I talked to Charlie Newman about it too, I said, why can't we get a fee for your pipeline coming through this, this Osage territory, Osage land? He said, because we go through the BIA, we ingress and egress, and we pay the topsoil, we pay the landowner, we don't pay you. It's exactly what we said. And there ain't a darn thing we can do about it. Two thousand and six allotment, or nineteen oh six allotment, it's a powerful act, but it was signed by Theodore Roosevelt, and he didn't like Indians. He's had remarks about it a lot.
Yeah, some of us love it.
But he still signed the Congressional Act of Commerce.
I'm loved.
And that was the nineteen oh six allotment.
I don't care about the hate.
For the sake of the people that are here today, when that, when that was signed and allotted all the, two thousand two hundred twenty-nine Osage, a lot of land, it all changed, everything changed. If we didn't have that nineteen oh six allotment, we could do any darn thing we want to. We didn't have, we didn't have, we wouldn't even have that brother's signature. But we can't, because we're, we're still, and we've been. And there were, and you, and you, and you, everybody here has been a fresh rate from the nineteen oh six allotment, our grandfather, and great-grandfather, great-great-grandfathers. That's how it works, and then, there's nothing we can do about it. We can try, we can try to compact, but that's been shown, thrown out, we can try to contract, that's been thrown out. We can try tariff, that's been thrown out. So what do we do? We're, we're still the, we're still the same, but go ahead, Maria.
Well, I was just wanting to say, most everything you've said, Councilman Redcorn, I agree with. And I've heard, uh, your chairman say before that when, in two thousand and four, when we were allowed to choose our own form of government membership, um, I think that on its face, that, that's a good idea for a tribal nation to be able to do, but when, when our document came and was presented to us, it, it didn't address this in a total way, that this minerals estate. And I believe I've heard him say, and I'll just say publicly, my family did not support the Constitution as it was written. But, but we lost that, and, and now we, because that Constitution was adopted, and that's what we have to work with. I agree, the reason we disagreed is because we had the nineteen oh six Act that said one thing, and we had this document that said another that caused confusion, and the confusion still has a ripple effect upon what we do and how we function today. That's why I come and I talk to you guys about this situation of whether we think that people ought to be employees of the nation and sit this seat or not. You probably have the, I believe you do have the ability to change that by the rule or regulation as a body, I believe the Constitution does, it can be that authority to do that. That could change from council to council, however they...
I gotta stop this, let, let me talk.
Good, Councilwoman, well, if anybody served six terms, speak ahead.
Okay, there's no one here to do that. You, your father was on the actual Constitution, the writing of it. Remember the last page where they named everyone?
It was on the thirty verse, yes.
Let me talk. Can you do that? Let me talk. I understand that, because I was on the thirty. But the whole situation that you're talking about, you're trying to give irrelevancy to something that we shouldn't even been in the Constitution. And I'm not trying to throw the axes at you, I'm not gonna do this, but here it comes. Keep us out of there. I had to take my counsel to court to allow us to be minerals council. Y'all never did that, no one even wrote it in there, and we had to, just to protect our shareholder. And it was over information, and it doesn't fall to that. I think if this criteria goes any further, I wanna, want you to hear it from your Attorney General, so we know who to turn on. It's all gonna be the back of the room, it's gonna be you all. And I had to be this guy, but you guys talking about some of that information you just said, I'm the guy that didn't get my job ten years ago, and said over half a million, my family had been without. I had tried to not hold that personally against anyone, because, uh, as you well know, I got family on there with you. You guys gonna have to like it, uh, don't test us, and damn sure don't test me. That's all I got, Chuck. Councilman Reba.
Oh, I just, uh, the whole setting of who can be on the council and who should not be on the council, I think is in some federal, uh, in federal documents under the Federal Registry, uh, under our election laws. Who qualifies, who could be a qualified candidate to, to campaign and be, uh, voted in on as a council member? And that's a decision made, uh, pursuant to these, these guidelines. And nowhere in that document does it mention the nation. So it's one thing maybe for the nation to tell their employees, I guess they can tell their employees, and if they wanted to, give them a dress code, and everybody wear the same clothes, a uniform, I guess they could do that. Uh, if they don't want them attending something, I guess, maybe, uh, it's not our business, but, uh, so it's one thing for the nation to restrict their employees from serving on our council, but I don't think it should have anything to do with, with who, who we allow to, uh, serve on this council. That's already established by, uh, and recognized by the federal government. Who is qualified to be on the council and who's not, and regardless of what the nation says or does. I just wanted to, uh, say that.
Another point too, when you're looking at the regulations, Paul Odenbrink, the little book, it, it does say Osage Tribe of Indians. That's what it says, and as far as I'm familiar with that, you know? Anybody else? Uh, thank you, Maria.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your discussion as well. I have, this is a file here, so I have a lot more knowledge than I did when I sat down here, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, uh, nothing more than new business, we're going into executive, we need a motion, we go anything?
So do.
Second.
There's a Councilwoman Waller. That's on the road to make a motion.
Any discussion? Here you go, hop for the vote.
Second Churchish Wallace.
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Chairman Redigal.
Yes.
Councilman Reba.
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford.
Yes.
Councilman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I'm very proud of that, Councilman.
Uh, before y'all go, we're gonna take a ten minute break, before y'all go, I talked, I talked to Betty Streeter, I sent him an email, you can't call him, he won't answer the phone. I sent him an email and asked him about hiring freeze in BIA. And he said that, uh, it's gonna be FY twenty-five the whole year round. He said, but, they were having discussions a couple of days ago with the, with the Department of Interior for kind of an emergency hiring, I believe, would describe it as, to hire some people over here to help us out with those things over here. That's where we're at.
Oil and gas, please.
Ten minute break.